Okay, it's four o'clock. Do we want to get the study session going?
Absolutely. Thank you Chair Burton. So, welcome Planning and Zoning Commissioners, members of the public, and several of our staff to your Planning and Zoning Commission Study Session for today. Not too long of an agenda, so we're hoping to keep it quick. But Chair Burton, if it's okay with you, we could introduce and welcome David Hayward, our newest Commissioner from District One, as this is his first first study session. Did a little orientation with he and Tina Berger, who is your other new Commissioner. She will join us next month. She just got appointed yesterday. And not sure if she's sworn in yet. So, I've met David, and he lives, he lives literally, like, right there. So, we know him, and he served on the Flagstaff Regional Plan Advisory Committee. So, know him from that effort as well. If maybe if everyone wants to introduce themselves, and let him introduce himself. Oh, wow, that's cool.
All right, yeah, welcome, David. I am Chair Burton, Tiana Burton, and it's great to have you.
David, Rob Wilson, Vice Chair. Happy to have you. Looking forward to working with you.
Hi, David. It's Sheila Walsh. I am in Judy Begay's district.
And this is Sotbest, District Two. Go District Two. Rama Veska's district. Welcome aboard.
Hello there, David. Of course, I know you from the Regional Plan Committee, and we've already had an opportunity to sit down with a cup of coffee and kind of get you acquainted with a little bit about what we're doing here. So, welcome aboard.
And hello, my name is Rose Tohe, and I am in District Four, and welcome to the group.
All right, we get all the Commissioners? David, I would point out, and maybe I'll ask the the staff members who are with us to turn on their cameras if they're able. I'm just going to go from the top. Bob Short is with us this evening. And Bob is Principal Planner, so Bob essentially manages current plans. And you'll, you will receive lots of presentations from Bob.
Hello.
We also have Zach Schwartz from our staff. He's our Senior Planner. And Zach will be, he kind of divvies up the duties quite a bit with Bob on giving presentations to the Commission.
Welcome, David.
And we have Melissa Shaw with us. She's our Long Range Planner. You probably remember Melissa, David, as she worked with the Flagstaff Regional Plan Advisory Committee.
Thanks for joining. Great to have you, David.
And we have the staff members, the staff member you will hear the most of, as she is the distinguished Secretary of the Planning and Zoning Commission, is Charlene Slaughter. So, Char is, will be emailing you quite a bit. And you will hear from, you'll get some email correspondence from Char. Not seeing Char, however. She's awesome.
Hi, Commissioner Hayward. This is Charlene. Nice to meet you.
And the last staff member, but not least, probably the most important one, the CYA staff member is Angela Lane, and Angela's with the Attorney's Office. And Angela supports our department from the Attorney's Office. So, thank you for coming, Angela.
No problem. Always happy to be here, and hello, everyone.
And Madam Chair, it looks like we do have some public here. So, if you'd like, we can jump into your agenda for the study session.
Yeah, let's go ahead and start with case number one.
Okay, one and two are some pretty simple cases. Bob Short is managing both of those. He's prepped a short little PowerPoint to orient you to those. And of course, items one and two are your anticipated public hearing items for next month, February's public hearing. So, go ahead, Bob. Will do, Sheila.
Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners. Get this case up for you. Okay, these are just simple cases. This is, this is the Mitchell RV as a residence. And the application applicant in this case is Virginia Mitchell. And this is Outian Valley in the AR1 Zone. It's a basically one acre parcel. And this is vicinity map showing the location of the property. You can see Highway 180 coming into Valley here, Highway 64 coming up. This is the intersection. This is the airport. So, it's down here in this area. And this is an arrow photo showing the subject property. There's one nearby development. Most of the properties around are not developed. And she would be living on the property full time, and she comes down to Williams for a job. This is the site plan. And that's about it. As you know, these are very simple. This is actually the RV that she's living in now. Any questions on this one?
I do quickly, Bob, if that's okay. If you could go back to the aerial close up, it looked like there was more than one structure on that property already. Or is that just a fenced enclosure?
There's, I think there's some, some kind of animals back here. I haven't visited yet, so I'll be visiting it probably next week. This is the actual RV right here, and there may be some outbuildings as well. So, there's quite a bit there. You can actually see in the, in the picture right here. Well, you can't see a lot. I kind of came in close on it. But it's, it's there, and there's some development on the property.
Okay, as long as the, if the site plan can be updated to include anything that's currently there, that would probably be beneficial for next week, next month, excuse me.
All right, thanks.
Any more questions on this one? All right, I think we're ready for the next one.
Right.
Hey, Bob, are you able to share your screen for the next one for the metal storage?
Yeah, I'm just getting it up. All right, so this is a metal store, storage container. All right, so this is the applicant is Leonard Earl out of Parks, Arizona. He lives out on Garland Prairie Road on a 10 acre parcel in the general zone. And the request is for an eight by 40 metal storage container. And this is a vicinity map showing that property. So, you're coming out of East Garland Prairie Road down out of Parks, right in this area. And then if you've been out here, you know that you come down a little ways, and then the road straightens out, goes along this little bit of development down here. This is Sycamore Canyon. Some good hiking down that area, and then it pops back up and heads on out. But this is where the parcel is. It's a long linear parcel, and you can see it here. The development is on the north end of the parcel. And that's what he showed, has shown on his site plan. He has his home here, barn and a garage, and then that Conex container right there. Any questions on this one?
I have a quick question. Is there currently any screening on the side that faces the road? Is this an existing container that we're, we're retroactively approving?
No, there isn't any screening on the road, but he has worked with all of his neighbors. He's actually gone and talked to each one of them, and they're okay with it. And it is actually already on the property. He had ordered it, and it was coming in, so I'm like, okay, you can go ahead and put it on there. But, you know, it's at risk, of course, as to whether it gets approved or not. But he has actually painted it the exact same color as his house. So, it does, it actually blends in very well.
Great. Anybody else have any questions? Not seeing any. All right, it looks like that's it on the study. Oh, wait, we have a pending review for the study session. So, Jess, do you want to get to the next item?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Burton. And I would point out, for the benefit of our new Commissioner, David Hayward, that metal storage containers or shipping containers under the county zoning ordinance, you are permitted in our rural zoning districts, the G-zone, the, which this, that project is going in the G-zone or the AR, Agricultural Residential Zone. You are permitted by right, one 20-foot shipping container, and that can be installed with a, with an administrative permit through staff. However, if you want to go more than one 20-foot container or larger than a 20-foot container, in this case, the applicant's asking for a 40-foot container, that does require conditional use permit. So, when we get, when we get new Commissioners, I like just give them the shortcuts there in the zoning ordinance for, for everyone's edification. So, Madam Chair, we only have one item up for administrative renewal. It is CUP 2503. That would be renewal of a forest product processing cottage industry on 2.3 acres in the AR5 Zone in, in the Timberline area on Gunman Alley. I think some of you may remember this case. So, this is back for renewal. We see that the applicant has met all of their requirements. There's no complaints and no issues, so they are eligible for administrative renewal. Any questions or comments from any of the Commissioners on this administrative renewal?
Well, Commissioner, okay, there we go. Commissioner Ruggles had his hand up. So, let's start with him, and then we'll go to Vice Chair Wilson.
Yes, thank you. I think Mr. McNeely answered my questions because I remember how contentious this was with the neighbors. So, the fact that there are no complaints, there's no opposition to this this time, I find, well, it's good to hear that, but I find it rather interesting that that's where we are. It's a good thing. So, that's the only thing I have to say about it at this point.
Vice Chair Wilson?
As Commissioner Ruggles recalls, so do I, that there were a couple of his immediate neighbors that were very much opposed to this idea. So, I'm glad to hear there haven't been any complaints. But as a part of this administrative renewal, is there any requirement for public comment? Is my question.
So, thank you Supervisor. I had a long Board Supervisor hearing last night. I'm going to call each of you a Supervisor now instead of Commissioner. So, yeah, thanks, Commissioner Wilson. The site will be posted, and so that's the notification that the neighbors will be aware of. A lot of times when we post an administrative renewal, if the neighbors do have complaints, sometimes that brings them out of the woodwork. So, once we, once we post the site, we will obviously take a little time there that after it's posted to see if we receive any complaints, and, and then we'll take it from there. So, you may hear about this again next month.
So, you're saying there is no requirement to officially notify anyone that it's being renewed?
Bob, am I missing anything here? Other than the posting?
Yeah, it actually is noted, it is noticed and posted both.
So, we do, we do the same mailing as we would for a hearing. Okay, sorry. Yep, okay, so they will get the mailing.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
It looks like Commissioner Ruggles put his hand back up again as well.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, that was, that was my question. Well, partially anyway, because, yeah, this is a study session, and it is yet to be posted. So, I would expect that if the neighbors are unaware of the timeline on this, that we will probably have plenty of public comment. So, I just, I think I'd be ready for that when this comes up. So, thank you for just clarifying that a little bit. Yeah, public comment certainly is a part of these things if the surrounding public has been opposed to it as they have in the past on this. I just kind of think I would expect that for the posting. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
And it looks like our new Commissioner Hayward has a commentary question.
Thank you, Chair. And that's the only time I get to be called New Commissioner, so it's over now. So, old dog. And it is a pleasure to meet all of you. And hopefully, I get to shake your hand at some point in the future. Just one quick question. What is the nature of the forest processing activity on the site?
It's a sawmill. Yes. So, Bob, or did you work this one, Bob? Or I'm trying to remember if it was you or Zach, if you wanted to give any further explanation. But our zoning ordinance offers the ability to do what we call forest product processing, which can be a sawmill or other, or other methods of processing local forest product. And that, in this case, it's in conjunction with a cottage industry conditional use permit, which is really, as described, cottage industry running a business typically from a accessory structure at a residential property that has greater impact on the site, more visitation than a typical home would have, and potential, potential for some impacts. The other triggers that, that cause a cottage industry to require a conditional use permit above and beyond what's labeled as a home occupation, which is permitted by right under the zoning ordinance. Cottage industry does give you the ability as a business owner to have employees who don't, who don't live at the home, work at the cottage industry, and have more customer traffic visiting the home than possibly one would expect with just a, with a typical single-family home. Does that answer your questions?
Yeah, the question and some unoxed questions as well, Jess. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Commissioner Ruggles, you still have your hand raised? If anything else?
Yes, I do. I can add a little bit to that. Something that would be helpful is going to the Agenda Center, Coconino County Agenda Center, and pulling up the analysis from the hearing on this approximately one year ago. I believe it would have been on the March 2024 Agenda. At least for the study session. I don't remember whether it's March or April. So, that would be a very useful bit of information for someone who has not been on the Commission or not been out there to do a site visit like this. So, just okay. Looks like that's a good suggestion then. So, thank you.
Okay. So, if the Commission would like, I actually have a short little PowerPoint. If you'd like to see that, just kind of an orientation on what I've been provided so far.
I see Vice Chair.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
It's been some head shakes for now, so I, so unless someone else does, I think we're ready to move on to the Community Development Department update.
All right, thanks, Chair Burton. So, the department update is all of our long-range planning efforts, and Melissa will, will take you through these items one and two.
Thank you, Jess and Commissioners. And Jess, I just see a comment, if you can make the agenda a little bit larger for people to see in the share screen. Thank you. Maybe one more would be good. So, our first update, and Commissioner Hayward, these are ongoing updates. We've been, been talking to the Commission every month about the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan Update and then the Comprehensive Plan Update. So, as we've, as you all know, the 60-day public review period for the Flagstaff Regional Land Use Plan closed in December. There are actually just over 2,400 comments on the draft plan public comments. So, mainly City Staff has taken on that burden of analyzing and essentially encoding all of those comments. So, you'll be able to see the categories that they fall in and how many comments were made based on the categories that they've fallen. So, so that's something that is being done right now. There's some, there will be some additional public outreach prior to public hearings that will give people a chance to look at the comments, to really understand how they are being addressed, and to focus in on some of the main issues that came out of the public comment period. So, those, those additional engagement opportunities, we don't have dates set for those, but they will be in the spring, probably in March or April. What I want to share is that, and this is something that you all have been updated on monthly, that there is a joint retreat scheduled for May 2nd. That will include the, the City Flagstaff Council as well as Board Supervisors, and then the City Planning and Zoning Commission and the County Zoning Planning and Zoning Commission. So, we, we have a venue set up. It's probably going to be at the Aquaplex. So, that will be a joint all-day retreat on May 2nd. And that's something that we will, we will get you more details as that comes along. It's going to be facilitated by Cascadia Partners. They are the consultant that has, was involved in the regional plan update in terms of all this scenario planning. So, they're very familiar with the project. The agenda hasn't been developed yet, but that is, is being worked on. I wanted to share a document with you. So, we might bump out, I might bump Jess out of the share screen and just show you a, some milestones. And it basically is a comparative side-by-side about the regional plan schedule and then also the comprehensive plan schedule. So, here we go. Is that large enough to see?
Yeah, a little bit. That's good.
How's that? Okay. So, I'll just start in this column about the, the regional plan first, because we're on that topic. So, we're in January, February. So, right now, as I mentioned, the, the public review comments are being analyzed, and then the plan is being revised based on those. And at the same time, we're planning on those, those additional public outreach opportunities. The Regional Plan Committee will meet again on March 6th to look at all those comments and to consider potential revisions to the plan. And at the same time, you'll see that, that there'll be a survey that will be another public outreach opportunity to really dive deep into some of those main issues that have come out of the plan. So, in April then, and this is all 2025, these are 2025 dates, we'll have final legal reviews. We will have open houses, and then the results from the survey will be presented out to the public. So, this is prior to the joint retreat again on May 2nd. And then just moving, moving further down into the year, then in June, we'll be looking at polishing the plan with final revision, preparing staff reports, and then the City Planning and Zoning Commission will have two hearings. They're required to have two hearings on this. That will be in July and August. And then the tentative schedule currently is to have the plan ready for the City Council Special Meeting in September to vote on the plan, and then at the same time, they will call the ballot measure. So, you remember, we've talked about how for the Flagstaff Regional Plan, City Flagstaff residents will vote on it on a ballot measure. County residents will not, but that's how, the difference in how the plans are adopted between the two different governmental entities. And so, the ballot is planned for March 10th of 2026. So, the City Council will need to call that for, call that ballot measure at the same time that they're voting on the plan. And then thinking about, okay, so that's City Council, City Planning and Zoning Commission, City Council adoption for the city, the county Planning and Zoning Commission. Then we're looking at having public hearings in October. And then also then for the County Board of Supervisors in December of 2025. So, having the city review it and adopt it first, the county review it and adopt it second, and then the ballot measure would be about three or four months later into the 2026. So, that kind of gives you, you know, a very rough outline of, of the regional plan process. And we just presented this, this morning to a small meeting of Board Supervisors and City Council members, and we'll probably be presenting this to the full board coming up soon. We do have a meeting scheduled with the Board, April 22nd, a work session on the regional plan, and then we'll be scheduling something with all of you to also give you a much more deep dive, basically a tour of the plan prior to the retreat, so you're prepped for it. And then over in this left column, and just stop me at any time if you've got questions about this, because I know it's a lot to absorb here. But for the county's comprehensive plan, Chair Wilson, or Vice Chair Wilson, I'll pause for you.
Ms. Shaw, I'm curious to know, at what point does the regional plan get locked down so that there won't be any more changes to it?
That's a great question. And so, that would be after public hearings. So, after the city.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Right, that would be during public hearings. So, when the City Council adopts it, that will be the city version that will go to the ballot. When the County Board of Supervisor adopts it, then that will be the final version that the county has adopted. When it goes to the ballot, then that could potentially, I mean, there's a chance that it won't be approved by voters, and if that's the case, then it will go back for revision and then go back through more public hearings. Let's hope that doesn't happen. You know, after all this public outreach, but.
So, in October, when we take public comment on it in the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and if, as a result of that comment, we decide we need to make changes to the plan, the city's plan has already been locked down at that point. Is that correct?
That would be, yes, that would be, well, it would be locked down in the sense that there would be, that would be the version that's going to the ballot. So, the city's version is going to the ballot after they adopt it.
So, even before either of these get adopted officially, either by the Board of Supervisors or by ballot, they could already be significantly different. Is that true?
Well, the idea with having the city adopt it first and the county adopting it second, ideally, we'll be adopting the same document. So, once it goes through the city hearings, public hearings, we'll know what, how that came out. There may be revisions at the public hearing, in which case we would understand what needed to be changed, and then we can bring it to the county for review and adoption. If it comes to the county and either the Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission makes recommendations to change, or the Board of Supervisor does, then it may be the situation that we do have two different plans. That actually happened in 2014. There are, the plans are slightly different. They're not significantly different. They are slightly different.
And what authority in October at that meeting does the Planning and Zoning Commission have? Do we have a, the authority to actually direct changes to the document before it's forwarded to the Board of Supervisors? Or are we making recommendations to the Board of Supervisors for changes to the document?
It would be the latter. It's, it would be adopted as an amendment to the county's comprehensive plan, similar to an area plan. So, you would make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisor on whether or not to adopt that version and/or if you had changes to it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Best?
So, what I'm getting from this is, in a way, the retreat on May 2nd is sort of the, is that the last chance we have to officially impact it before the city version becomes official?
No, this is an opportunity for the appointed and elected officials to get together and talk about this and really get clear on any of the major issues that may come up. But there'll be additional revisions to that, and then during the public hearings, that's another opportunity for revisions to occur. But the, the May 2nd retreat and then the workshops prior to that, the public workshops, are other opportunities for comments. But at some point, the plans are going to, will be moving into public hearings. So, just like at any other amendment to the comprehensive plan, once we're in public hearings, that's where more comments are taken. And this is a tentative schedule. If something is continued or, you know, sent back for revisions, then there's always that possibility. is continued or, you know, sent back for revisions, then there's always that possibility.
It just does seem awkward um that in September, the city's plan becomes official. In October, it's coming before County P and Z uh and I, I can't think of substantial differences uh. Once, one former substantial dis- difference was carbon neutrality by 2030. I don't believe that's in the plan as it's now written. But there may be other things. It would seem like we would want to get the city and county together as much as possible before um it became official on either side.
And I, and I do think that, again, I can't emphasize how um, I think the point that you're raising is exactly what we're trying to achieve at the joint retreat on May 2nd. So you all have a chance to talk to each other and look at the, the major um places where agreement, you know. There won't be decisions made at that meeting, but there'll be opportunity to discuss points like, you know, uh differences.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Wilson.
So Ms. Shaw, the, the meeting on the 2nd of May is to familiarize ourselves, not for joint efforts between the city and the county to make revisions if they seem necessary to those bodies responsible for the approval of the plan?
I think that there can be, there'll be an opportunity to hear what revisions are um are requested. Um, but there wa, it's not a public hearing. So decisions, collective decisions won't be made, if that makes sense. But certainly, there'll be an opportunity if County Planning and Zoning Commission would like to see a change because of it doesn't align completely with the city's vision, then that is gonna, that's something that's important to bring up.
Okay, because it, it appears that we're being asked to, to review and, and basically consent with the, the, the plan in May and we're not getting any public input on it until October. So okay. I understand, I understand the timeline. So that, that's, I know that's what you're trying to do here. So I understand the timeline. Thank you.
Right. And let me just back up to remember on the um, so the and before this, this began, so back in uh October to December of 2024, we had a 60-day public review period for the regional plan. There were 2,400 comments from the public on that plan. And that's what the Regional Plan Committee will be reviewing again on March 6th. And that's what the survey and the open houses will present, what those comments were.
And, and the open houses would be expected to generate more comments?
Possibly, yes.
And all of those 2,400 plus the comments from the open houses would be under consideration when we had meetings in October?
Well, the plan will be revised based on those comments. So when you see it in, at the joint retreat, that will have, those comments will have been considered and wrapped into the plan. So there, there won't, yeah. There'll be revisions to the plan based on those comments prior to public hearings.
Well, not all plant, not all the comments are going to be incorporated. There, there's gonna be, I'm, I'm guessing many that don't, right?
Right. And, and just some of the comments are more just editorial or um.
Okay. I, 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 I don't want to get any deeper into this. I, I understand the timeline. Thank you.
Commissioner Hayward.
Sorry, can I just talk without raising my hand in these? Because I'm get, I'm getting used to it. So um you know, uh, you know, as the uh, the, the former, the chair of the um the citizens, what you guys call the citizens advisory committee for the um, you know, for the regional plan, it's um, you know, that's essentially the role we played. You know, I can, I, I can say that I, I've never seen more outreach and public participation on something the city is, has done. Um, you know, uh, other than this, this particular document, I don't, well, I started, I mean, I, I think Sarah probably started that outreach at the beginning of last year, maybe earlier than that. Um, you know, so there has been a, there's been a, a huge amount of it. Um if that uh, you know, kind of ma, makes you feel any better, it's, it's gonna have been, you know, a hundred times, 200 times what we, you know, I think expect to get in a single uh meeting of this, of this group.
Thank you for that reminder, Commissioner Hayward. And yeah, the, the public outreach actually started about three years ago with this planning process, with the visioning. Um, any other comments on the regional plan process? Because I'd like to then just take a few minutes and give you an update on the comprehensive plan process before I get into a little more detail on that. Um so as you've been hearing every, every month, we are working with the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Group, similar to the Regional Plan Committee. Uh, well, we're meeting with them this month and next month and uh possibly into March, but we are um working through the different chapters. And I'm gonna, I'll give you an update as to what they've seen in a moment. Um, but after they are concluding with their meetings, then we'll be preparing the draft plan for the county's 60-day public review and workshops. So that will be in April and May. Um, so the 60-day public review, we're planning to have it available online, but also, you know, take it out to the different regions of the county. We're anticipating at least one open house workshop in each of the districts. So that schedule and locations are, are yet to be put together, but we'll be working on that. And then we're anticipating in June revising the plan based on those public comments and then preparing a draft plan for public hearings. And tentative, tentatively have um the Planning and Zoning Commission with you, public hearing in July, which, as you'll see, is the same month as the City Planning and Zoning Commission hearing on the regional plan. And then tentatively have the Board of Supervisors public hearing in August. So um, remember with the, with the county comprehensive plan, we do not, we are not required to put it on a ballot. So that phase of the process that the regional plan goes through is not required for counties and um in Arizona. So does anyone have any questions on our tentative process for the comprehensive plan updates? I wanted to then show you more detail if Jess goes back to the agenda.
I don't see anything. So if you want to continue.
Okay. So this is, this was in your agenda and just a rundown of the um the advisory group has looked at all of these chapters so far. They have looked at sustainability, resilience, energy and climate, water resources, natural environment, diverse cultures, community character, circulation and transportation, and then land use growth and development and parks, open space, trails and recreation. So they are meeting again on um next Thursday, a week from today, to basically look at the revisions to these last two, land use, growth and development, and parks, open space, trails and recreation. So the rest of these, they've all reviewed um twice. And we are working on, we'll be posting all of those um on the project webpage, which I'll show you in a moment. I did want to just mention that they have a meeting scheduled on February 20th to look at the last two chapters, um minus the introduction, which we will also be sending to them. Um, chapter called resilient economies and housing, and then community services, public safety and partnerships. So uh, they have uh worked their way through all of these to date. And we are posting all of the meeting agendas, the video recordings on the project website, which I'll show you in a moment. Um, you know, we've, we've got quite a few contacts that we made. Once we, we start our 60-day public review, we'll see how many um comments we get on that. And then um as always, we're notify, you know, encouraging people to sign up for the website and the email list. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen, Jess, if you don't mind. And we can take a little tour of the website. Okay, so this is our project website. I think you've all probably taken a look at this. Um, we have a lot of information. It looks a little bit different than a lot of websites because of the platform we're using. But um, we do have all of the advisory group uh meetings posted down here, but these are also where we post the draft chapters. Once they've been through uh review from the advisory group, so um, people can take a look and see what they've looked at so far. We will have these up on the same site during the 60-day public um comment period, so that they will actually be taking comments on the draft plan. So the um, the agenda for the advisory group, what they'll be looking at is here. And then all of their agendas, the video recordings are also posted down here. We need to, I need to get this updated as far as the last few meetings. But that was um what we wanted to give you an update on as far as long-range planning projects. There's there's not um any additional news on the Route 66 Brownfields Grant. We'll probably wait and give you more information on that next time. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Ms. Shaw, I'm curious to know if anywhere in the comprehensive plan rewrite, we've addressed the transfer of land that is currently under the control of the county to state, federal, or other entities?
Um, Commissioner Wilson, could you clarify your question? Addressed it in what way?
Whether the county supports it, is opposed to it, is there's a process involved, whether there's any public involvement? Um, any, has it been addressed in any way at all?
Um, land transfers have not been directly addressed as far as a process. Um, there are goals and policies as far as how any change in land ownership would um, would, you know, the goal is to be consistent with the goals and policies of comprehensive plan, but there's not a specific process outlined in our comprehensive plan for something like that, because we don't have authority over it.
While the county may not have authority, doesn't it have a responsibility to its citizens to represent their needs and desires?
Uh, absolutely. And the plan, that's what the plan is um, one of the.
And in order to, to provide that support, wouldn't they need a reference that gave them what the community wants to see? And isn't that what the comprehensive plan is supposed to be?
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure I'm understanding what your question is as far as land transfers.
We've recently had a land transfer that caught an awful lot of people off guard. And a lot of people who are concerned about what might happen in the future. And it seems like this is the document that addresses how things, we would like, how we'd like to see things work in the future. And therefore, it would seem appropriate to include something in this document that addresses if these land transfers are going to occur, how to best manage them. Recognizing the county doesn't have the authority, I, I'm, but there should be some type of public awareness, public comment, public feedback. Um, or perhaps just a chapter that says, we don't have that authority. And, and here's why. Um, but right now, there's a huge hole of knowledge out there and a bunch of people who don't understand why what's happened has happened. And it would seem this would be the document that would have an opportunity to, to address that.
Okay, that, yeah, that's a, that's a good point. We can bring that up with the advisory group in terms of uh where that might best fit into the plan.
Thank you.
Can I just ask what land transfer you guys are talking, the new thing? Everyone's like nodding their heads and I'm like, I don't know what, what you're referring to.
Jess, why don't you answer?
I there was recently a transfer of land out here in the Timberline area to the Navajo Nation that caught a lot of people off guard. And uh, I, I would like to see there not be surprises in the future.
Commissioner Best. You're muted.
Thank you. Going down that same road, one function that would be useful would be a mechanism by which we can project the values of the county as outlined in the comprehensive plan in a neighbor-to-neighbor relationship. Um, the United States as neighbors, Mexico, Canada. Uh, we don't have the authority to tell them what to do, nor do they have the authority to tell us what to do, but we have ambassadors and we chat all the time about our mutual interests. And I think that if land moves into a jurisdiction where we no longer have control, we do have the ability to be good neighbors and share values. Uh, to not be in communication at all is unneighborly. And uh I think a weakness in the system as it now stands. Thank you.
Ms. Shaw, do you have anything else um regarding either of the items that you talked about?
No, those were the updates that we wanted to give you. And um but thank you for the comments. They're always helpful. And I think that we will just continue to um work with the advisory group. And then I think the one thing that I would like to ask either tonight, or maybe we can do this later, is to um find out a good date where we can give the Planning and Zoning Commission a um a detailed update into the comprehensive plan draft bef, way, well before the public hearing. So you're prepared for that. To focus just on the comprehensive plan. We're not talking regional plan. This would be on the comprehensive plan.
So are we talking about an agenda item for a future agenda?
I think it would be a study session item um where we could maybe um allot a bit more time. But I can work with you and Jess on that date, but that would be something to think about for the.
Yeah, I think, I think everyone would be on board with that plan. So yeah, um, I would say you and Jess just reach out and we'll figure out the best time to do it, probably when we don't have a whole lot of items to discuss. So, all right. Um, if we're ready to move on, I think we can go to the Board of Supervisors update.
Yes, thank you, Chair Burton. So last night at the Board of Supervisors um hearing, the board approved zone change 2012. That was the Happy Jack Lodge expansion zone change that was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, and the next public hearing going to the board will be the Grand Canyon cabins, which I think is supposed to be the Grand Canyon Inn and cabins um in the Valley Area Zone Change, uh, which was that uh historic legal non-conforming for zoning hotel, uh, which they were adding some um park model RV cabins to the property. That'll go on February 11th. Any questions about the public hearing items um that have recently gone or going to the Board of Supervisors?
All right. I'm not seeing any. Let's go ahead and go to roundtable.
Absolutely. And uh, well, the other, the other board action I would point out, it's not a public hearing item, uh Chair Burton, but of course, David Hayward was um, was appointed a couple of weeks ago to the Planning and Zoning Commission by the Board of Supervisors. And yesterday, um Tina Burton, uh, excuse me, Tina Berger. Tina Berger was appointed by the Boyd, Board of Supervisors to uh, to District 2. So she will be joining um Commissioner Best as the two uh representatives for District 2, which with the changes to the map is entirely within the City of Flagstaff now. Uh, that's, that's a change for us with the um, with the district boundaries. So if you'd like, uh Chair Burton, I can go on to Commissioner Staff and Roundtable. Um
Yes, please do.
So, yeah, on that note, that leaves, this is the, this is the first time since, since I've been here that we have nine commissioners appointed. This is impressive. We don't, we are not sweating a a quorum quandary as badly as we, as we have in the past. So we have nine appointed. The only open seat is is Tammy Ontiveros to fill the seat that she vacated. We've talked to her a couple of times. She has a lot on her plate. She's drinking from the proverbial fire hose. So we do anticipate knowing that she is a she, she does not let things remain undone. And I would fully anticipate she will be contacting us with at least some discussion or recommendation on, on who she would like to appoint to fill her seat.
It looks like, if we, if I can interrupt you real quick, Commissioner Walsh put her hand up like right as you started originally talking.
No, go ahead and finish, Jesse. I just want to talk about a subject that came up.
Okay, well, before we get to that, the only other item that we went ahead and put on, on your agenda for the roundtable was the discussion of moving the call to the public, which typically goes to the end of your public hearing agenda to the beginning of the meeting. And that is my understanding of what was discussed. I believe it was Commissioner Best who brought it up last month during your study session. So that's why we put this item on here. And I would certainly want to know if, if I'm describing that correctly as Commissioner Best was the one who initiated that discussion.
Go ahead, Commissioner Best.
Thank you. Since I brought it up, I'll discuss it just for a minute. I think the question is whether or not we want a robust opportunity for people to come and talk to us about things that are not on the agenda. Council has a system and it's used. And it can probably be kind of a pain sometimes. But on the other hand, I, I think my job as a commissioner is to make everybody in the county feel like they have had a shot. When they come before us, they've had a fair communication, they've been listened to and I think letting people come and talk to us would further that communication. So it, you know, in the 20 years I've been doing this, almost, I don't remember anybody at eight o'clock at night stepping forward to answer the call to the public. But I think if people knew that it was at 5:30, they might. And it could be difficult, but I think our main job is communication and I would encourage us to give it a try. Obviously, we would limit it to three minutes. It could not be the topics, I assume we'd limit it to three minutes, like the council does. The topic cannot address anything that's on the agenda. There may be some issues percolating out there that people are frustrated about that they'd like to bring forward. And I would be willing to give it a try.
Okay, yes, you are correct that it would be three minutes of speaking time. Because we want to keep it fair across the board for how we handle the regular hearing items. So I don't think it's a bad idea because, yeah, if someone has something that they want to just directly say to us that we're not engaging in conversation since we wouldn't be able to. I don't have a problem with moving it up to like right before the public, after approval of minutes, right before the, the public hearing. I think it would be the right location to put it for people to have a voice because honestly, in all the years that I've been on here, Commissioner Best, you were the first person to ever say anything in the call to the public agenda item. So with that said, Vice Chair Wilson had his hand up and then Commissioner Ruggles.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Best. I believe our job here is to represent our community and the more input we get from our community, the better able we're able to do our job. And the only suggestion I would make is that rather than move it, while we very seldom ever get any, I, I think we should have both at the beginning and the end. So that anyone that has an opportunity or feels they need an opportunity is provided that opportunity. Thanks.
Commissioner Ruggles.
Thank you. I guess I just got demoted to citizen there. So anyway, I have to concur with both Commissioner Best and Commissioner Wilson on that. And I think my reasoning is that although I'm willing to stay here at these meetings until the sun comes up the next day, very few members of the public are. So in that case, I think public perception is an important factor here. And when meetings like this, Board of Supervisors, city councils, others can go on for a long time. The public perception is that, well, if we have to wait until one o'clock in the morning, then they're not very interested in hearing my public comments. So in that respect, I think public perception says, hey, why don't you listen to us right off before you get to these other matters? We're important too. So that's my opinion on it.
Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you, Chair Burton. I agree with Commissioner Wilson, beginning and end. But I am also a giant fan of time limited sharing for all of us, not just the public. So that we can be succinct and say what we need to say once. Okay, that was all I have to say on that. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was I was looking at communication from a friend of mine that lives within the city limits. And it re in reference, the Friends of Flagstaff Future has their communications about the regional plan summarized in an email. And I'm happy to share it with anyone. But point number seven for them was ensuring the integrity of the urban growth boundary. And this got my ears pricked up because it includes whether the city would allow, the Flagstaff City Council would allow providing water and sewer service outside the urban growth boundary. I am not a fan of that. So I support this issue that they are bringing up. Because this property that our friends and neighbors sold to the Navajo Nation now that has made its way into the Navajo Tribal Gaming Port is on property that has no infrastructure available to it. And I would really not be a fan of providing that to them. It would cost all of us dearly. They are on a private water meter that's for a residence and I need to ask the private water company on what they're going to do about that. And then the last thing I wanted to bring to your attention, because I'm not understanding it really well. But there is an Arizona House Bill 2371 that has made it out of committee. And I'm afraid that bill is going to try to supersede our local jurisdiction over zoning. And I don't know if anyone else has information on that or not. And that's not what I want to discuss right now. I just wanted to bring it to your attention because I'm going to pursue looking at House Bill 2371 to see if they're going to try to override our local jurisdiction with regard to zoning and house development. And that's all I wanted to bring up. Thanks.
Okay. So I guess my first question, Mr. McNeely, is call to the public, is that something that can be done at the beginning and the end without us having to make modifications to anything else? As far as the order in which we do things?
Absolutely, Chair Burton. So I reviewed your bylaws. The bylaws do not address the order of your agenda at all. So I would say that's always been a matter of staff prepping an agenda. And then obviously the chair, when, when you open the meeting, have the authority to move things around if you would like. But staff can certainly take direction to, hey, let's make it our habit to move or duplicate the call to the public following, I think, did we say following approval of minutes?
That, that was what I would prefer to do is keep it after the approval of minutes, right before the public hearing.
Before the public hearings, sure.
Yeah, that's made the most sense in, in my mind for the order of, of how things should run. So I would say that, I mean, I think it's worth giving it a shot and, and seeing. So for future agendas, I would be okay with an opening and a closing call to the public. And, and we'll see what happens. I mean, worst case scenario is nobody asks this, speaks to us, neither one. So that would be fine. Yeah, because we are here for a very specific purpose. There are some of us, though, that have full time jobs and don't want to be here till dawn. So I think being cognizant of everybody's time, because I'm guessing, Mr. McNeely, you guys aren't getting paid extra to be here extra long after the full day. So I, I think it's appropriate to limit speaking time to three minutes like we do for our regular agenda items. So Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, thank you. I just took a look at HB 2371 and something that Commissioner Walsh should be interested in. It currently only applies to municipalities, which is very typical of legislation like this in the legislature. However, that being said, sometimes what only applies to municipalities from the start is sometimes later on applied to counties. However, just, just a note of clarification on that. It's certainly worth following what the legislature does in this respect because there's nothing that says it's not going to affect us in the future. Thank you.
Commissioner Walsh.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruggles. I live on the east northeast side of town and I, I don't want to become part of Flagstaff City. So yeah, I, I think it's worth following. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would add from staff that the county has a government relations staff and anytime new HBs are, are proposed, those get routed through the County Supervisor Association, through our government relations staff. And they will typically send them over to us. We will review them and let them know if we see, if we see any impacts or not. There's, there's a few gosh, a, a few legislative bills that, that get, that get proposed every year and, and don't go anywhere. So some of them, we've seen numerous times now. Where someone has, someone in the legislature has a pet peeve, something to do with, with planning zoning at the city or county level. So, so we do respond on those. And it is, it's, it is our staff's response that then goes back through the government, government relations staff to then advise the supervisors on, on what is, what is the county want to advocate for one way or another on any. So there, there certainly have been some where, where you know, we know what the expectations are clearly laid out by our comp plan and then, and then codified in our zoning ordinance. And when we see something come in that would take away our county's authority to manage those things and plan and plan our future, we speak up and haven't seen anything in, in recent years that has adversely affected that flexibility.
Vice Chair Wilson.
Seems we're bouncing around a bit here. Have we resolved the public comment question?
I, I believe so.
Okay. Commissioner Walsh brought up another concept that I, I would like to hear just an extra moment or two about the, the succinct time requirements. Everyone, could you expound just a second on that?
I don't see why not.
Are you asking me, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, but not for more than three minutes. No, I'm kidding.
I love it. I love a time limit because it, it will force me to condense my thoughts and make them the point one time. I did use to teach at the university level and I had to learn to not repeat myself five times. Because my students were sleeping. So, yeah, I just like us to be real succinct. Thanks.
So were you suggesting some change in how we conduct our meetings or just asking us all to be succinct?
Well, both.
What would be the change?
I, I would love a three minute limit for the public and, you know, and if we could do the same, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's, Commissioner Tovey.
Oh, thank you. I want to just have a little bit of time regarding the public comments. And I know that with Flagstaff Unified School Board, they normally limit like the first part of their public comment. And I think they only have, they really actually only have one public comment section. And that is at the beginning. And I think that if we come across things that are of huge interest to the public, I think we need to probably maybe limit the beginning portion of public comment like to 30 minutes or something like that so that we can get through our agenda. And then the end of the meeting, people can still make comments. But that was what I was thinking was would be best to do so that we can get through the, our agenda and not have to wait through several, a couple hours of public comment if everything, if something is controversial.
I am not opposed to that, to, or any of our, or any of the other commissioners opposed to setting a total scope time limit for the first call to the public. And then anybody who wants to continue on has to stick around for the rest of the hearing. If they really want to say it that bad, then they can hang out for a while. I see a lot of heads nodding. So I think we're kind of in agreement with that. Okay. So, Mr. McNeely, I assume that's something that we're able to, to set up, that we can just limit that first public comment to 30 minutes? Sure. Yeah. And anyone who really wants to say something after that can, can stick it out.
Three minutes apiece, limit it to for 30 minutes. We, we can certainly do that. And then offer again at the end of the hearing. I, I haven't seen an op, you know, I wouldn't anticipate that we would get 10, more than 10 people wanting to speak and call public, but who knows? We'll see.
Um, before I get to you, Commissioner Best, I am not opposed to giving ourselves time limits. I don't know if we should start off right away with like a mandate, maybe more of a, let's be cognizant and set our own timers on our computers. So that we can kind of sum up our thoughts when we see we're getting close to, to that time. And then we can readdress it later. I mean, how, that way we kind of get a feel for whether or not we really want to do that. So let me grab Commissioner Best real quick and then we'll get to Commissioner Ruggles.
Thank you. One thing we might want to do is request people to not duplicate comments. I, I can see that, for instance, I can see that, for instance, with this land transfer that we've been talking about, we could get a room full of people wanting to comment. We could have that next month. And so I would just say that we could ask people to respect the time of the audience and the commission and all the people who are waiting and not duplicate comments. And I think by and large, that might help. As far as timing commissioners, you know, one of the things that I like most and respect most about this job is that I really come to these meetings with an open mind, and I usually have an opinion. But my opinion can change based on my brilliant co-commissioners, and it does frequently. And I really like when we sort of get to commission comments and we do a round, and I think Chair Ontiveros is very good at this. We do a round, and then we do a round, and then we do a round, and and I enjoy that because opinions change. We've got a smart, well-meaning, informed group of people here. And I'm always looking for new information and a new way to look at things, so. I don't think that people rambling on and on is a problem as I ramble on and on. So I've made my point, and I thank you.
As far as that goes, I think that we will still continue to go back around should more discussion be warranted, so. Because that is something that we've done multiple times, and I think it is pertinent, because we do, we're basically hashing it out back and forth and bringing things up, so. I would say that we be cognizant of our time, and then if it needs to come back around, then we start again. So I'm not saying you get three minutes and we're not going to go any further than that, because I don't think that's appropriate either. I think we need that room for dialogue, so. I don't know. Commissioner Ruggles?
Well, thank you. I definitely have some opinions on this, and they coincide with what Commissioner Best addressed. And one thing that, in terms of speaking, I think arbitrary time limits for those making the decisions in an environment like we are in with the Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Supervisors, any other administrative or any other kind of forum like this is entirely different than an academic atmosphere. Let me take, give you a good for instance. I've been doing this a long time. And when we got to the energy, the battery storage case, what I did at the request of Chair Ontiveros at that time in going through a back and forth with the applicant about a number of aspects that were either technical could not be done in three minutes, not even close. So it behooves us all, I think, to try to be as concise and articulate as possible. And I think other members of this commission have always had that in mind. So placing any kind of a suggestion even of a limit on the time that an individual commissioner can speak in order to analyze what we are doing and come to a reasonably well-thought-out decision just just isn't the right way to go. Thank you.
So Commissioner Ruggles, I think we're not talking about the actual interactions. I think we're talking about that last, okay, let's go to the roundtable, or let's go to our commission discussion. Because I don't think we should have a time limit on our interactions with staff who are presenting and with the applicant. Does that make sense?
If we are, if we're talking about the roundtable, yes, because we do have a time constraint we have to meet. And then it's important, I think, to think about what you're going to say ahead of time, and in that case, the suggestion that you be as concise as possible would be a very good suggestion. But when it comes to commission discussion, no.
Other thoughts? I don't think we're going to make a decision on this this evening, so. All right. So we're not going to put any kind of time limits on commission at this point. We'll maintain our time limits for public. If, does anybody have anything else that they want to discuss? It's 5:15. I do want to make sure that we get a little break before we go into public hearing, so. Is there anything else? Commissioner Best?
Yes, I've been getting emails from Nina Schmidt about a design process for ADUs, accessory dwelling units. Are other people getting that as well? It may be because I was on the the housing program. Anyway, there's an exciting thing to me that I just thought I'd mention real quick. The city is putting together a design contest, and they will award 10 people for designing accessory dwelling units to kind of make them a little more cookie cutter. And I've been chatting back and forth with Donnie Parthree at the city about this with some ideas I had, and you can do that as well. You can contact me if you want. One of the things that I got out of the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Plan update a couple of years ago was that that area will build out in a decade, and now it's two years into that decade. And ADUs are a way to expand the population out there, but maintain neighborhood integrity. And so that, to me, was just an exciting development that we might sort of have a more cookie cutter and easier process for ADUs. So if you want to chat, give me a call or email. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Chair Burton, I would point out that we all introduced ourselves, and I failed to. I was trying to help facilitate that. If David Hayward wanted to do anything to introduce himself, he's got a full 13 minutes.
Well, um, thank you, Jess. When you said want to do anything, I didn't know if that, you know, applied like a little dance or something like that. No, I, no, it's just, it's a pleasure to meet all you guys. You know, just a little background on me, you know, you can tell by the funny voice that I was not born in the United States. I was born and grew up in England, moved to California when I was 15, spent some time there and around the west of the world. Did my college at UC Berkeley, was a management consultant, worked in some nonprofit housing stuff, and am now a real estate developer. And I do a lot of sort of housing advocacy work, you know, within our community as well, including working for Flagstaff Shelter Services, where we've put a lot of affordable housing in place. So it's a little bit about me, and I won't take up any more time, because you know, I might need the full 12 minutes to go pee personally, so.
All right, Commissioner Best, you still have your hand raised, I'm guessing.
You'll find that that is an issue with me, you're going to discover. You already know it.
I already know that. That's why I was just bringing it up. I was like, I'm guessing you didn't mean to.
I just, I need the attention.
Okay, so it's 5:19. Let's go ahead and take a quick break, and we will get started right at 5:30.
Before we start, I just want to say I'm pleased to see that the video is working well.
Same.
Yeah, I agree.
Same thing.
It is 5:30, so I think we should go ahead and call this to order. And let's start with the meeting rules and procedures. Welcome to the January 29, 2025, Meeting of the Coconino County Planning and Zoning Commission. Cases will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. Following the staff presentation, the applicant and/or the applicant's representative may address the commission. As an applicant, if you agree with the staff report and have no additional information, please feel free to keep your comments brief. Any relevant comments are welcome. Following the applicant's presentation, I will make a call to the public. If you wish to address this case, please state your name and address. We ask that your comments be limited to three minutes or less. Comments must be relevant to the case. Please address all comments to the commission. No matter how strongly you may feel about the case, all comments must be respectful. After all interested public have spoken, the public comment portion will be closed. Discussion will then take place amongst commissioners. Decisions of this commission regarding any zone change or preliminary subdivision plat approval are referred to the Board of Supervisors as a recommendation. All other case decisions are binding unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors. If you disagree with the commission's decision, you have 15 days to appeal. Please contact the Community Development Office for appeal procedures. Due to the virtual nature of this meeting, I will be doing a roll call vote of the commissioners to ensure accuracy for the record. We ask that the public please mute your microphones and turn off your cameras. Additionally, the message function of this platform is for communicating technical difficulties only. It is not for case discussion. Thank you for joining us this evening and actively participating in our county planning. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. McNeely, would you please lead us?
Yes, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chair Burton.
Okay, the second item on the agenda is the approval of the January 8, 2025 minutes. Does any commissioner wish to comment on the meeting minutes from last month? Okay, I'm not seeing any, so if there's no comments, I'm ready for a motion in a second.
Madam Chair, make a motion. Will you approve the minute as presented, the January 8, 2025 minutes as presented?
I'll second.
Who was that second?
That was, I think I beat John Ruggles.
Commissioner Williams, okay.
Microsecond.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson and a second by Commissioner Williams. All those in favor, Commissioner Ruggles?
There we go. Okay, aye.
Hey, Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Togi?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
I'm standing.
And this is Chair Burton, and I vote aye, motion passes. Okay, this brings us to tonight's public hearing. The first two items on the agenda are routine RV as permanent residence, both CUP-24-024 and CUP-24-052 are recommended for approval by staff. Are there any commissioners who wish to discuss either of these cases this evening? Seeing none, do either of the applicants or their representatives wish to make any additional comments? Seeing none, does anyone in the public wish to address the commission on either of these cases this evening? Seeing none, I will take a motion and a second for approval of both CUP-24-024 and CUP-24-052.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve CUP-24-024 and 24-052 as presented.
I second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson and a second by Commissioner Walsh. All those in favor, Commissioner Ruggles?
Aye.
Commissioner Best?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Togi?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
And this is Chair Burton. I also vote aye, motion passes. Okay, the next case on the agenda is CUP-24-048, a request for four 16-meter met towers. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Zach Schwartz with Planning Staff. This case is CUP-24-048, the Big Bo Met Towers. The property owner is the Navajo Nation, and there are two applicants for this case, NTUA, that's the Navajo Tribal Utility Authority, and Pacific Wind Development LLC out of Portland, Oregon. The property size is an eight-acre portion of four parcels that together total almost 55,000 acres. And the location of the subject properties are north of Seligman on the Big Bokeas Ranch. The zoning for these properties are general. This request is for a conditional use permit for four met towers. And met towers are used to study meteorological conditions in the area to determine if that area is suitable for a wind farm. These four towers that are requested would be 60 meters in height, so that's approximately 197 feet. The applicant's narrative discusses that there may be lightning rods on top of these towers, which would bring them to a total of 199 feet maximum. And so that is less than the 200 feet in height or higher that would require FAA lights on top of these. So these will be unleaded towers. These towers are requested to be operated for up to five years, and they would be guide towers with bird flight diverters and aircraft markers. And the project would use existing ranching roads for the Big Bokeas Ranch with no need for additional improvement. Here's a vicinity map, so in the red, that's approximately the project location. This line right here is the county line between Coconino and Yavapai. Seligman is just south of the project area, and Walapai is up northwest of the subject project area. And this is the site plan submitted by the applicant and their package. Again, Seligman down here, these towers are all miles apart from each other, stretching north pretty far up there onto the Big Bokeas Ranch. This is a drawing that the applicant submitted, so you can see the tower. It's a pretty slim profile. It's alternating orange and white in color. These are examples of what you would see for guidelines. And in this drawing, you can see aircraft marker balls, but the applicant's narrative discusses that there would be additional bird flight diverters on the guide wires. And this is a photo of an example tower, and this was in the applicant's packet as well. It's a little bit grainy of a photo, but this is what the tower would look like in real life. The guide wires, you can't really see too well, but you can kind of see the aviation visibility balls. Apparently, this photo is supposed to have bird flight diverters on it. You can't really see it too well in this photo. There is a history in this area of similar approvals for met towers. So there were met towers on nearby sites further to the west from 2005 to 2014. All of those conditional use permits have expired, and all of the towers have been removed from those sites. Staff just mentions this because we were looking to see if there were any lessons learned from those towers, something that we could apply to this case here. But after review of the previous cases, there wasn't anything that showed us that there were any lessons learned that we could move forward with. With this project, there is a potential for wildlife impact, and specifically, a little bit to the west are the Aubrey Cliffs and the Aubrey Valley. These are sensitive wildlife areas because they have unique qualities that support avian species such as golden and bald eagles, peregrine falcons and prairie falcons, multiple species of hawk, and also bat species. And so there are three different designations from different environmental groups that are applied to the Aubrey Cliffs and the Aubrey Valley. So the first is a conservation opportunity area, and that was designated by Arizona Game and Fish. The Audubon Society also designated the area as an important bird area. And then Game and Fish, in collaboration with Coconino County, designated a wildlife corridor in the area. So here's a map that shows these things, these black pin These black pin points are the requested tower locations. This gray area here is the conservation opportunity area, also known as a COA. The green area here, that's the important bird area or IBA, and then this is the wildlife corridor here. So because there are possible impacts to wildlife, the Arizona Game and Fish Department sent a letter to staff dated November twenty one, twenty twenty four, that was in your packet, and it included some recommendations should the subject, should the project be approved tonight by the commission. And so those included that met tower operations should be for the minimal time necessary, that there should be carcass studies conducted, that there should be bird flight diverters at intervals of every ten meters on the guide wires, and that the applicant should continue to cooperate with US Fish and Wildlife and Arizona Game and Fish Department throughout the operation of these towers. This letter was actually written when there were six towers included in this request. The two additional towers that are not included in the request as of tonight were inside of the COA and the IBA. And though the applicant has taken out those towers from this request, Game and Fish decided not to modify their letter because they still feel like there is potential impact from this request. And they also noted specifically a study that was done in two thousand eleven showing that raptors do fly outside of those designated areas and outside of the wildlife corridor. And after the letter was written, there were also discussions with our urban wildlife planner and Arizona Game and Fish that led to one additional recommendation for a condition, which is that no tower should be located within five hundred meters of a prairie dog colony. That's approximately a third of a mile. There's also a potential for visual impact for this request. So the applicant did conduct a met tower viewshed analysis, and they used GIS software called Zone of Visual Influence to do that analysis. So that software takes heights of the towers and combines that with topographical data to show where a person might see the tower from the ground. I think what we're going to see on this map on the next slide, it might be a conservative estimation because of the slim profile of the proposed towers. You might not see them from a few miles from the tower site. So it does show that there would likely be some minimal impact, but the visibility would mostly be on ranchland areas and undeveloped areas. The analysis shows that the towers would not be visible from Seligman. However, one or two of the towers may be visible from four Walapai home sites. So here's that analysis. The applicant has shown the tower sites and then five, ten, and fifteen mile radius buffers from that, just to give you a sense of scale. So the areas in green here are where you would see potentially one tower, and the areas in pink are where you would potentially see two towers. These black dots are Walapai home sites, and so there is an area right here where Walapai home sites might have visual impact from this request. As far as citizen participation, the applicant held meetings in November and December of last year. They did invite the Walapai Tribe to have a supai tribe, Arizona State Land Department, and Arizona Game and Fish Department to provide comments on this request. The Walapai Tribe did have comments related to viewshed, and specifically regarding that area that you saw there where there might be some visibility of the project from the tribal home sites. And then Arizona Game and Fish provided recommendations regarding the wildlife impact that were noticed in some of the previous slides that we've gone over. Additionally, staff reached out to Yavapai County Development Services because the viewshed analysis did show some areas where visibility might jump the county line into Yavapai, and Yavapai County did not respond. This is kind of a wordy slide, and I apologize for that, but I think it's pretty important. As far as how does the case conform to the Coconino County Comprehensive Plan? So there's one goal and two policies in the natural environment element that call for conservation of wildlife habitats and movement corridors. And they also call for the county to work with our partners to protect sensitive and listed wildlife species. There's one policy in land use and growth that calls for the county to work with our partners, including tribal entities, to maintain scenic viewsheds and also preserve wildlife habitat. There's a policy from the community character element that calls for a viewshed analysis to be done for any potentially impactful projects, and the energy element includes two policies that call for guidance from Game and Fish and US Fish and Wildlife for met tower projects, and it calls for us to avoid product sites that might conflict with wildlife. So regarding the findings of fact, the commission is aware that you have to be able to make each of the four findings of fact in order to approve this case. The first finding of fact is that the proposed location of the conditional use is in accord with the objectives of the zoning ordinance and the purpose of the zone in which it is cited, the project is cited. And staff's response to that is that the location is in the general zone, which allows met towers subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. Second finding is that the proposed location of the conditional use and the conditions under which it would be operated or maintained not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or materially injurious to properties or improvements in the vicinity. And staff's response to that is that the towers would be installed in an area that is isolated from other developments and uses in the county and will not be easily visible to other private properties. The third finding is that the proposed conditional use will comply with each of the applicable provisions of this, of the zoning ordinance, except for any approved variances. And the proposed conditional use does comply with all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance without any needs for waivers or variances. The finding number four is that the proposed conditional use is consistent with and conforms to the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. And staff's response to that is that the proposed conditional use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The recommended conditions of approval include wildlife mitigation requirements recommended by Arizona Game and Fish, and the thin profile of the requested towers, distance from populated areas, and temporary, temporary nature of the requested towers would be minimally visible without causing much disturbance. I do want to remind the commission that discussion and findings analysis of this case should be limited to this request that is before you and not in any potential future applications. But with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the commission. I'm recommending approval of case CUP twenty four zero four eight.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Zach, I wonder if you could go back to the viewshed analysis, the GIS viewshed analysis slide. At last month's, or at the, at the work session where we discussed this, I questioned why the viewsheds don't show that the towers are visible in some cases right next to them. So these green, light green shading areas, I would suspect should completely surround each tower because clearly, for some distance around the tower, you're going to be able to see them. Have we got a better explanation for why that's not the case?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair Wilson. So I think it's all related to the scale of what these triangles are, and they need to be this big so that you can see them on this map. But actually, they would be just little pinpoints. I mean, so the scale here is, this is seven miles from here to here. So that's quite a lot larger than the, the girth of, of what these poles would be. So really, I think it would show that, but, or I mean, if they were the size which they literally are, I think you would see that it's completely surrounded. But I think that might be a good question when it's time for the applicant to answer questions, they might be able to clarify further.
Okay, because we, you know, it's showing that you can see them ten, almost fifteen miles away. But you can't see them, you know, less than a mile away. And I would suspect the met towers are probably located on high ground since that's where they would want to locate the, the wind turbines. So I, I will pause and wait that question for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any other commissioners have any questions for staff? I'm not seeing any. So I'd like to ask the applicant or the applicant's representative if they would like to address the commission and if they have received the staff report and agree with it. If so, please state your name and address and proceed with your comments.
Sure. Good evening all. My name is Arash Mualimi. Last name is M O A L E M I with the Navajo Tribal Utility Authority. Address is North Highway Route Twelve, Fort Defiance, Arizona, eight six five zero four.
Do you have anything additional that, that you'd like to communicate to the commission based on comments you've already heard?
Yes, you know, first off, thank you to Zach for his thorough analysis of our application for the met tower placement. And thanks to the county commissioners for allowing us to present. Yeah, I think the only addition that we wanted to make is that we did have, we did offer a, a site visit to the Walapai Tribe previously in December. We actually did conduct a site visit yesterday with the Walapai Tribe just to address any concerns or anything that they wanted to bring up. Kevin Davidson and Kavoka Jackson were in attendance from the Walapai Tribe. And I just wanted to make sure that that's on record, that we did make sure that they were, they, they were able to view at least the, the, the tower that affected their, the Walapai Tribe the most. As far as, if you, if you want me to respond or the team to respond to Commissioner Wilson's question regarding the, the analysis of the viewshed?
Yes, please.
I'm gonna, Tyler and Melody Martin are our partners on the project, and they, they, they have more of the technical expertise on the project, so I'm going to defer to Tyler on this question, if that's okay. And then I'll allow Tyler to answer that, any clarification for the analysis?
Yes, that works. Thank you.
Hi all, my name is Tyler Hoffberg with Avengrid, address two seven zero one Northwest Vaughn Street, Portland, Oregon. Thanks, thanks for your time and time tonight, and again, thanks to Zach for the, the good job on the report. With, with regard to the, the viewshed analysis we're looking at here, Zach is correct, it's just a matter of scale on the map. This, this area covers about seventy miles north, south, and thirty to forty miles east to west. We're, what we're looking at here, the met towers, the scale of the met towers, those dots are, are probably close to a mile in width, maybe a little bit less. Really, what you're seeing here is the influence of terrain. You know, the southern sites in particular, there's a significant amount of topography. And even in the north, you know, it's, it's undulating terrain, which limits the, the visual impact from these locations. And I think, you know, as Zach mentioned, if you were to zoom in on each of those locations, you would see that, you know, there is, these are visible all the way around the tower as you would expect them to be. And where we're seeing the, the gaps where they're not visible is purely a function of the terrain.
Vice Chair Wilson, does that?
I, yes, it, it does. I, I know in the past, we've had questions about the integrity of these representations. And it, it just seems if we could see it fifteen, or in this case, it looks like sometimes out twenty miles away. I, it, it's difficult to understand how you wouldn't see it under a mile or two away, so I, I will take the topography as the answer. Thank you.
Yeah, and if, if you don't mind, I mean, I can, if you want a little bit more specifics on the analysis, I can jump into that and maybe why, you know, you're seeing it from self, you know, technically seeing them from so far away from a topography standpoint. You know, as far as the, you know, my guess is those points out, way out fifteen, twenty miles are very high on really high peaks looking down. You know, when, when this analysis is run, it's a pure, you know, math game really of, of the software analyzing a pixel value of elevation at the location and every pixel elevation around it for as far out as you want to go. The towers in the analysis were set at two hundred feet. The observer height for every other pixel was assumed that a six foot person standing on every other location, you know, across this map. You know, it's, if we had zoomed in versions, we could dive into a little bit more. And it might make a little bit more sense, but, you know, it's, it's purely a topographic, you know, analysis of, you know, and doesn't even take into account trees. You know, if there's trees that may block the view or anything like that, it's assuming a bare earth analysis.
Commissioner Ruggles?
Hey, thank you. I've got a question that's somewhat related to what Commissioner Wilson was asking about. In the analysis that we got and the presentation that was provided to us, I noticed that access to the towers for the, for this project would be from the west side of the cliffs. I know in the analysis, it says access is from the south, Route sixty six, yes, but the, the map showed access up through the valley and then up over the cliffs on existing ranch roads. Is, is that correct?
I'm happy, I was waiting to see if Arash wanted to, to take that one, but I'm happy to take it.
I was on mute, my apologies. I was going to defer to you on that, on that question as well, Tyler. My apologies.
Okay. Yeah, I think, you know, that this ranch has a, a very, a very good network of roads that come, you know, through the ranch, you know, from north to south. The plan would be to use the shortest route possible to each of these locations, which may be why, you know, for met tower four at the bottom and probably three, we'd be coming in from, you know, off of Route sixty six and out of Seligman there. Met Tower one, you know, maybe off, you know, that road that, that you mentioned that comes up, you know, kind of through the valley, or, you know, alternatively, the, the paved road that comes in up towards the north, you know, off of Route sixty six. Really just the, you know, the easiest, easiest route in for each of those that would make sense.
Okay, yeah, that's pretty much what I assumed. I just, verification on that because I was out there in November with staff to visit the site. Yeah, I'm very familiar with what large ranches are like in, oh, well, throughout Arizona. And the network of roads is pretty extensive, has to be to manage cattle in an area like that. So as long as it's, it can be varied, you know, it's not really too important how you do that, as long as the area on the west side of the cliff isn't disrupted in any manner that affects wildlife. And my knowledge tells me that for met towers, you're not going to get much of that, if any, because it doesn't take much to get up there with vehicles. So I appreciate your answer to the question. Second question, fencing around the, the met tower sites, is that going to be just the tower and the anchors for the guy wires? Or just regular cattle fencing around the entire area, which would span approximately, oh, I'd say a radius of two hundred feet based on your data?
Yeah, Mr. Ruggles, the, the fencing, you know, is purely to keep cattle away from the structures. You know, we, as, as shown in the picture here, it's hard to see, as Zach mentioned, it's a little grainy, but it's just a small cattle fence around the base of the tower, and then, and then small fencing around the anchor points.
Okay, well, thank you for the clarification on that. That would have been my guess as to how you'd want to do it. Don't need any more than absolutely necessary. So that, I think, takes care of any additional questions I have for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other commissioners that wish to address the applicants? Do the applicants have any additional comments?
No additional comments. Thanks.
That's for me. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So then I will go ahead and open this to the public. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to make a comment on this application? If so, unmute or raise your hand. I'm not seeing any, so I'll close the public comment portion and open it up for commission discussion. So let's start with Commissioner Ruggles.
All right. Thank you. I do appreciate Zach's words for stating that this discussion and this case is strictly about met towers and not dealing with sighting of any wind turbines that may be in the future. We don't know that yet. So getting past that, part of this is, I officially have to state that I visited the site back in November with staff. Any discussions with the applicant and other other people who were there is strictly about the process involved with doing this hearing and going forward with the discussion relating strictly to the met towers and nothing else. So one thing in looking at this and getting the questions to answer, very simply, met towers have a very, very low impact in the area in which they are situated. Having looked at a number of them in the past for cases similar to this, the visibility, considering the diameter of the actual tubing used to construct the tower, at the distances we're talking about, the one that would probably raise the most questions was the Walupi housing area that is affected. That looks to be about seven and a half miles away. And my experience with this is the visual impact at a distance like that or even the height of the towers, about two hundred feet, because of the very, very, very low or slim profile of a met tower, that the visual impact is going to be quite minimal. And so I'll leave that up to other commissioners to enter into the discussion about that. But that is my opinion on it, having taken a look at these things from numerous site visits. The guy wires, even the balls attached to the guy wires, the aviation balls, visibility balls, even at the size that is being proposed, thirty inches in diameter, I believe, from that distance are almost invisible. So that being said, you can probably guess where else I'm going with this. If there are no wildlife studies that deal with avian mortality, I did not have the time to delve into that, but I'm sure our wildlife planner, Jessica, could address that if there's anything, because I think that is the only issue I would have with the met towers at this point. So at that point, I'll leave it to everyone else. Thank you.
All right. Mr. McNeely, is it okay to see if Jessica can chime in on that?
Chair Burton, absolutely. We have Jessica Simmons, a wildlife planner with us.
Jessica, are you able to address Commissioner Ruggles?
Hi, good evening. I don't know of any specific studies like that, but we have some folks from Game and Fish here with us, and they might be able to speak to that.
If any of them have any information, we'd love to hear it.
Hi, commissioners. So from what I know, we don't have any studies done in this specific area now that we have cut out the IBA from the project area. I know Angie's on this call, so I'm not sure if she has any specific information related to bats. But we at this time don't have any studies that confirm just how far this migration corridor extends into the area where the met towers are proposed.
This is Angie, and I'll just say, and I apologize. Can you clarify if the question was studies in this area or studies related to met tower impacts on wildlife?
Specifically, met towers, not this area, because I doubt that there was any work like that done with the previous request for a CUP. So just a general idea is what I would be looking for. Because, well, wildlife considerations are quite important here. And in looking into the impacts of that towers, the big problems that have come up with the FAA have been primarily from crop dusters and associated works such as that. Also, law enforcement and emergency services with helicopters. But I think what we're dealing with here is wildlife issues. I just wanted to know if there was anything that gave us an indication about what to expect being in the area that it is in, especially with the southernmost tower, I believe would probably be of most concern.
So my understanding, and so I'm a bat specialist. I believe that the main issue with met towers is tends to be related to bird impacts and guidelines. And that's the reason for the recommendations to, you know, add the various things to those to make them more visible to birds. I'm aware of one study that I believe was in Florida, where they were checking met towers or some type of tower for a period of over twenty-five years. And there were a few incidental bat mortalities that they found. But in general, I don't believe met towers pose a huge threat to, you know, to bats. But certainly carcass searches for birds and bats and applying kind of the typical things to the guidelines is very, is what we recommend and would be, you know, a prudent thing. And then to report to us so that we can have that information, you know, as we make recommendations on other projects in the future.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I believe the conditions cover that. So I think that gives me sufficient reason to go forward in going for approval with this, with the conditions as written. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When I sat down to analyze this and I looked at the staff analysis, compliance with the comprehensive plan, and I simply read the natural environment elements, I found that it was not in compliance. And I don't think I need to read them all. I think I read them all. I will read Policy seventeen. Project sites that conflict with critical wildlife habitat, sensitive species, movement corridors, riparian areas and areas of significant topographic relief, such as canyons and cliffs, should be avoided. And that is exactly where we are. As I look at this map, I see a narrow band of land going north, south with the four towers in it between the conservation opportunity area and the important bird areas and the wildlife quarter. I have approved over the years, I have voted for approval of many a met tower. But it looks to me like in this case, what I just read would pertain. Reading the letter from Arizona Game and Fish at the very end of the, at the end of the packet, what I basically got from that was the same thing that I'm thinking. Game and Fish did not come out and say no, but they certainly mentioned a lot of wildlife values that would be threatened. You know, they mentioned that they've been working on this, on projects in this area since two thousand and five. And I remember being up on the cliffs, oh gosh, at least fifteen, seventeen years ago, on another case. And so I have a sense of the of the land structure and just the awesomeness of it. We have numbers here of thousands of raptors up at the canyon on a north, south line as they migrate back and forth. We have hundreds of bats caught, fifteen different species in bat survey operations. You know, it's always a balance. We need renewable energy and the structures that report it, which these towers do. At the same time, there's a balance of the effect on wildlife. And I think in this case, simply reading the staff reports, staff analysis, compliance with the comprehensive plan, I just don't think it complies. And that is my judgment, and I wait to hear other comments from other commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Williams.
Oh, Daddy hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I guess I have some of the same concerns as Commissioner Best. I mean, I do wonder with all these studies, the raptor studies, the carcass studies in particular, and maybe Game and Fish knows, because that's their business and not mine. But it seems like doing a carcass study once a month. I mean, anything that's on the ground and not alive is going to get eaten by coyote. Like, almost immediately, I would think, or within twenty-four hours. So it's not going to sit there. Nothing's going to sit on the ground out there for a month. So, you know, it's hard to know how much stock to put in that. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I mean, they have, they do their studies a certain way, I guess. Or maybe it's too onerous to put, you know, like a weekly carcass count on the applicant, or is it the monthly something that's the Game and Fish standard? But, you know, at the same time, I kind of, I could be persuaded that, let's see what it shows up with the met towers, because this isn't the final project. And, you know, if things don't go well with this, it makes it easier for the next round of decision-making. So I don't know. That's kind of where I am.
Okay, Commissioner Togi.
All right. I do, I did have a question about the carcass count. And I was just wanting to know if that was, if anything that happened in the past with these kinds of studies, is it reliable, is it reliable according to what's being proposed right now? And so I guess that's the part where I'm a little bit not sure if that is a good indicator of why, of wildlife, of protection of them. But as far as the findings, the recommendations of the staff, I don't have any problems with it. I think that the applicant's reduction from six to four towers is proactive on their part.
Yes.
And I just feel like, I think it's one of the things that is helpful for the wildlife to take that into consideration. And then as far as the met towers, the protection of any active or inactive prairie dog colony. So is that to protect the birds or both? I wasn't sure about that. Or at least maybe just have someone speak to that would be nice. And like I said, I'm fine with the findings of the staff and the recommendations. Thank you.
Ms. Simmons, can you address both those questions that Commissioner Togi brought up?
Yes, I can. First, I can address the prairie dog question. That is not to protect the prairie dogs. It is to protect the eagles or the other raptors that might be hunting the prairie dogs. Game and Fish recommended that there be no towers with guy wires close to a prairie dog colony, because when raptors are hunting, they get very focused on their prey. And that, in that situation, they'll be way less likely to see the guy wire, and they will collide with it. So that is to protect the birds. And the other questions were about the carcass surveys. Commissioner Williams, you're absolutely right, both of you, that one carcass survey a month is not going to give. So, so these carcass surveys, I don't know if survey is the right word. The idea is just to have staff who is visiting the met towers maybe once a month do an informal survey. This would not be a trained biologist. Carcass surveys that are very formal can be meant to actually give an estimate of how many birds or bats, turbine or met tower or other structure is actually killing. And in that case, there are a lot of formalized trials. Commissioner Williams mentioned scavengers. There are scavenger trials, and there are search and efficiency trials. And the biologist would be out there way more often than once a month. But this is to give just an indication. So if the maintenance worker never finds any carcasses, that would be one piece of information. But if every time they go out, they find ten carcasses, that would be just a piece of knowledge to help us know what's going on out there. But it would not be a formal way to estimate actual mortality out there. It's just to give an indication.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Okay, Commissioner Walsh.
I appreciate all of the questions and answers to this project. I can't really tell from the map how far the towers are away from the cliffs. I'm wondering if carcass counts can be done. Can Fish and Game allow these met towers to have game cameras on them that can be monitored remotely for more frequent monitoring? But I think these are met towers, and I agree with the comments that it will give us information for any future projects. So based on the staff report, I think I can make the findings.
Thank you. Vice Chair Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too have some concerns about the carcass studies and what the real intent of them is. One of the concerns I've voiced One of the concerns I voiced at the study session is that if as a result of these carcass studies, we say, if we find 10 bald eagles dead every month, is there a threshold at which point we say, wait a minute, we need to take these things down? The consequences are not acceptable. And, and apparently that's not the intent of what this carcass study is. It's and, and Ms. Simmons, if you could clarify for me, is the real intent of this to determine if we were to do something beyond a Met Tower? What, how severe could the consequences be?
Uh, yeah, I, I discussed this issue with some folks from Game and Fish and Ms. Potter, feel free to weigh in because you and I discussed this, but basically, since, since they're not formal surveys, like you say, if the, if the maintenance worker goes out and he is ankle deep in bird carcasses, then this would be part of the applicant doing continuing communication with me and with the department in order to take further steps and do possibly do more frequent carcass surveys or, or take, take any other appropriate action. But that further conversations would happen at that point.
Okay, so they'll be updating you on a monthly basis with their, their findings?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And then, and then my second concern, condition number nine says the Met Towers need to be at least 500 meters away from any prairie dog colonies. Those must exist already, I suspect. And so my question is, do any of the currently proposed sites violate that 500 meter restriction? Because if they do, and they need to relocate the Met Tower, then they'll be violating condition three, which says they have to be done substantially in accordance with the plans as submitted. So do we know the answer to, are there any prairie dog colonies within 500 yards of the existing proposed locations?
I am trying to remember. I, I'm pretty sure I discussed this with the applicant and I don't believe they did any formal searches out to 500 meters from these sites, but that they didn't notice any that they can remember. Because this is a relatively recent condition that was added.
Okay, so I, I guess what we'll do is if they do find that, we're going to have to rely on staff to allow a variation to the plan as submitted in order to avoid the prairie dog column.
I, I don't want to speak for the planners, but I believe that usually these kind of conditions is there's some language like insubstantial conformance. So I think if a tower site were moved a couple hundred meters this way or that, I think it would meet that.
Okay. And then Commissioner Best brought up whether this meets the conditions. And he mentioned that, you know, we're required to avoid sensitive areas. In, in my opinion, by removing the two Met Towers that were actually in the sensitive areas and kind of threading the needle down the area that they are in, they have in effect avoided the sensitive areas. So in, in my opinion, I can make the findings because they have done just that and complied with those requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wilson. A couple of commissioners do still have their mics on, just so you're aware.
Sorry.
We'll come back, we'll come back to the hands raised in a minute. I'd like to finish going through the rest of the commission. Commissioner Hayward.
Thank you, Chair Burton. Having not participated in the previous study session, I'll keep my comments short. I suppose also saying, coming from a, a bit of an outside perspective, maybe four installations, you know, of, of objects that are, you know, slightly wider than a telephone pole over an area that is approximately four times the size of the island of Manhattan. I don't see there being any impacts at all, quite frankly. I'm, I'm, I'm simply not concerned, either in regards to wildlife or view sheds and the, the items that were addressed in the regional plan or part of the regional plan. I mean, sorry, the comprehensive plan to get that right. So based on that, I have absolutely no problem finding, you know, making the findings and approving the project with the conditions as is. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And this is Chair Burton. And I think one day we will get to the point where we do ask for cameras to be put on these. I don't think we're at that point yet. But I think that's something the county is probably thinking about at this point. I can make the findings. I was very pleased when they removed two of the original proposed that were directly in, you know, the danger zone. So I can make the findings of approval for the Met Towers, given that I believe it's fairly low impact. It's only four. And I am curious what the results yield. With that said, there were some hands raised, or a little earlier. Do any of the commissioners have more they want to say on the subject? Commissioner Best.
And where are the prairie dog colonies in question? Are they in the valley or are they up high?
Ms. Simmons, is that something that you can address?
There are no prairie dog colonies in question. Maybe is, is, I'm not sure what you mean by that, but they, they haven't noted any that are up on top of the, up where the Met Towers are going to be. They haven't mapped any.
That's what I would expect. There are well-known colonies in the Aubrey Valley because that's where they're reintroducing black-footed ferrets. But I wouldn't think there would be any up on the ridge. Uh, thank you.
Commissioner Ruggles? You're muted.
Sorry about that. A quick comment relative to the prairie dog colonies. Having visited the area, we took a pretty extensive tour of localities where there's sites for the Met Towers would be. And what I'm going to say next, I may want to ask Jessica Simmons to comment on my comments. My observation is it is extremely rough, rocky and treed, although they're typical juniper. A lot of it up there. That is not an area that is conducive to prairie dog colonies. They typically want open area where they can see quite some distance. And I think Commissioner Wilson is familiar with that, being right next to an area that had substantial number of prairie dogs, including his property prior to the development. Those are properties that on top of the Aubrey Cliffs are just extremely rocky and are not conducive to the kinds of areas that prairie dogs want to build in because they cannot see the predators that they normally experience. So that's probably the reason why nobody has noted prairie dog colonies. And if Jessica would like to comment on that, I'd certainly appreciate it. And then that's it for me. I can make the findings. And that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Simmons, do you have any comments on Commissioner Ruggles?
Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Ruggles is correct about prairie dog habitat. We only, we did only visit, maybe you visited maybe on a different time, but the, the site visit I went on, we only visited that very southern Met Tower location and the other ones are miles and miles away to the north. So I can't speak to the habitat where those other ones are located. But yes, Commissioner Ruggles is correct. That probably where we were was too rocky and too treed.
Thank you. All right. Do any of the commissioners have anything else that they want to address? Are we good to go for a motion? Okay, then I will take a motion in a second.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve CUP 24 dash 048 as presented with the conditions as presented.
I will second that motion.
All right. I have a motion by Vice Chair Wilson and a second by Commissioner Ruggles. All right, Commissioner Ruggles.
Okay, I will vote aye.
Okay, Commissioner Best?
Nay.
Okay, Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Commissioner Togi?
Aye.
Commissioner Walsh?
Aye.
Vice Chair Wilson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hayward?
Aye.
Okay, and this is Chair Burton. I also vote aye. So we have one nay from Commissioner Best. Everyone else voted aye. Motion passes. Okay, the last item on the agenda is a call to the public for items not on the agenda. Is anyone in the public wish to address the commission for items not on the agenda? Not seeing anyone, then it is 6:31 PM and we will close the meeting. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks everybody.
Good night all. David Hayward, how was your first meeting?
Not too, not too shabby. So
All right.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm more excited about when things like, you know, the actual wind farms come forth. We'll see what, we'll see what happens. So
All right.
But it's, uh, yeah, I'm, 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 I'm looking forward to it. So.